Welcome, everyone. I'd like to bring to order the special meeting Monday, October 18, 2021 of the Tippin Town Council. Please stand for the political leaders.
The flag of the United States of America and to the Republic stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Jerry, do you have a call?
I don't.
Okay.
We were posted, and so if we get one more member, I'll open.
Yeah, just signal me.
Jerry, Diane, is there a form?
So I am going to open the school committee meeting.
Go ahead.
Thank you.
Okay.
That's all we need to do.
Okay. Joan, can I have attendance, please?
Counselor Perry?
Present.
Present.
Counselor Cook?
Here.
Counselor Janik?
Present.
Counselor Edwards?
Present.
Counselor DiMaderis?
Present.
Counselor Burke?
Here.
Counselor Viera?
Here.
All present.
There's been a little confusion. This meeting is about the ordinance that we passed a couple, a few months ago. This is the money that we have this year. It sunsets in June. Counselor Burke is working on the future monies, and he has a committee going, and we will be having several workshops concerning what to do with the future casino money. But this is the thirty-one hun- I'm sorry, $3.1 million that we are going to spend this year on capital improvements, both the school committee and the town council, like we promised. I'm going to start off by having the town administrator explain the worksheet he gave to us. It explains all the money we're getting from the certain government agencies and what he's proposing for this year.
So altogether, between the gaming of 3.1, that is as of end of FY '21, the Opera monies, which are 1.6 million, which is 819,000 each year, and then we're expecting another 3.1 million in county monies that is still not yet been determined yet. But that would be, again, two shares, so it would be like 1.5 million each year. And we still have $450,000 CARES money that is predicated on public safety expenditures. So under the gaming, obviously, there's an ordinance that the council had adopted and actually has modified to allow those funds to be expended in FY '22. So that's kind of where we're at, looking at whether or not, how to expend those. And there is some pretty significant restrictions on the Opera monies. The easiest part of the Opera monies is going to be the lost revenue, because we can expend lost revenue on any governmental expenditure without justification, basically. So it's the residuals. We have 3.2 million in losses that we have been able to identify and demonstrate over the past two years. And there's a formulary for that as well, moving forward, a 4% increase on, an annual increase on your expected loss. And then, obviously, the CARES money is still sitting there that we've been, it needs to be used by the end of December of this year. And we do have a number of different options to expend that with. So the memo is just basically a summary. So what I did on a spreadsheet was kind of took the 3.1 million in gaming, and we did have a meeting with Mr. Larkin and Superintendent Mr. Sencioni with a couple of council members, and we went over a number of their current capital needs that had been published in their budgets and what they thought was, you know, probably most important to be done. I know that we probably talked somewhere around 1.3, 1.5 million. I'm just plugging a number here of 2 million. I, you know, the town does have some needs it's going to have to resolve as well, especially as it relates to the recycling center. That is a high priority that needs to get off the ground. So I tried to look at the different categories of, under the Opera monies, where those monies could be expended. So there are, other than the general lost revenue items, there is broadband, and there is sewer and water, of which we have projects in all three categories that would be suitable. But I don't know how far down the road. And I tried to give you a pictorial to understand where we are with all of our capital needs from at least the town side. I know the school still has 20-some million dollars in capital needs that were demonstrated in every one of their budgets, that, you know, their five-year plans, and I'm assuming that's going to be updated regularly. And every year, if it gets to this gaming money, there should be significant monies that go to offset some of those.
But they're also going to get extra money from the government, from different...
They did, but I'm not so sure that they're going to utilize it for capital needs. I do...
Yeah.
I do...
They have significant things, rules for that money also.
They do. They're very strict. You know, I was going to say, there's lost learning issues, there's...
But that will help in the long run with your educational needs also.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. That's good. Okay.
No, so I didn't incorporate any of that, those monies into what would be considered what tonight is looking at is basic capital needs, no operational cost at all. So, and we also did somewhat of a survey that's out there, too, is another piece of document that's out floating around here tonight that has been updated as of today.
Yes.
That kind of gives us a feel as to what the community thinks these monies, how they should be allocated and used.
Which would be significant for next year's money.
Correct.
At that point.
Right. And we can keep that survey ever going. We can modify the survey. We can do a number of different things to it. But it was, you know, good to have public input. That, I bring that survey up for another reason. Is under all the Opera monies, especially anything that deals with non-lost revenue, we will have to have public input. So we will create another survey system to go out and have people put some input into that. But what I'm getting at is this entire spreadsheet is, look, these are things that I know of that we need to do, where down the line they get done, what timeframe they get done, and under what categories of monies. Obviously, I tried to pigeonhole them the best that I could to fit within the categories that are available. But I didn't think that we would be talking about anything tonight other than gaming. But I wanted you to see the entire picture.
We're just wanting people to see that we have other monies, and we're trying to spend that accordingly.
Very similar to the schools. I mean, we still have major capital needs as well that are outside of these, that, you know, where do we go? Do we bond? Do we do other things? Those are all discussions that need to happen, you know, as those issues filter up to be higher priorities.
Right. And once we decide how we're going to go further with the casino money, we'll see what we have available.
Right. So that's kind of the global picture of what I put together.
All right. So let's go down your list for gaming. So recycling is 650,000. Is that the total cost?
No, it's not. So I believe that we can use some monies from water and sewer, other Opera monies, to deal with getting water to that, to that, and to deal with some of the road issues to open up the road. So that's another piece that will be in addition to the 650. The 650 was a number that was kind of, when Parr put the estimate together about a year and a half ago, those were fairly solid numbers then, but we were anticipating using some of the infrastructure monies from the industrial park to help mitigate for the road issues.
Which we still can.
Which we still have, because actually, I need to get somebody in there to start cutting trees pretty quick. That's probably about a million-dollar outlay altogether.
And we also have the capital fund that is accumulating.
There's about another 80,000 left in that, I think, after the February...
But even after we put the money in for this year?
We didn't put any money in for this year.
Oh, that's right.
That's...
That's right.
We didn't know where we were going to be.
Right.
We had no idea when we put the budget together, what this was going to look like a year later.
You're right.
So...
Okay. Then the tax collectors' IT systems?
So this is something we desperately need to do. The system they have is totally unsupported. It has, we lose that system, we're going to be toast about collecting monies. So that's, it is, it is in pretty tough shape.
Okay.
The clerk also needs a recording system for her office, which is fairly well antiquated. So, and I did, just as a caveat, there, you'll see, and I know that this discussion about police cars and things have, you know, the administrative cars, I'm meeting again this week with the USDA people, if and when there are any kind of reimbursements, and I would suggest this with all monies and any expenditure, if there is any kind of match, any grant that comes in as it relates to spending these monies, those grant monies come back and refund these counts.
Now, the police cars, I do, I found an inventory that I had, but it was from like three years ago. I would really appreciate if the chief could give us an inventory of all the cars.
Yep.
The year, the mileage.
Okay.
Do you have one, a town-wide one for Rick?
I believe we have, and I'll have to get it, but it is stale.
We had one, but it was a while ago, because I found it, but it was from 2008, 17 or 18.
So the cars we're looking at, or would be the administrative cars that I...
But I'm wondering if there's any...
We bought Chief Blakey when he first came here.
Right. But I'm wondering if there's any cars that we're taking out of commission we could use for...
Yeah, we have about 15 of them over there. They're going to get into Muni bid to be, they're scrap. They can't be used.
They can't be used.
I have an accessories car out here that is taken off the road. There's, Rick's got two cars over his place that have been taken off the road. They're just, they're not worth putting any kind of money into it, because they're just not safe.
I would just like some kind of...
Report.
It would help for next year's budget, too.
Okay. No, we'll definitely get that.
My hope is that we don't put any capital in next year's budget, because we're spending as much as we can out of the casino.
I'm not, I'm not planning on it.
No. And I'm hoping that the schools, we can somehow make a plan to do that with them also. But when we met with, me and Mike met with Jerry and Dr. Sencioni, we decided that we will meet...
Periodically, yeah.
Periodically, to discuss what else is needed and to help the budget for next year. So, so the dog truck, we've needed that forever.
That's going to be another one that's going to be taken off the road pretty quick.
Yeah.
So we do have a new expenditure that came up this year as a result, and I, we've knew this, that, you know, the truck...
Can we just talk about the animals? Oh.
Sure.
The animal shelter is a save. We're saving money, because we're paying...
So this is, again, it's another new expenditure that we'd be looking at. We're spending 30, a little better than $30,000 a year to house, and I shouldn't say house. We're spending $30,000 a year to maintain six cages.
Which we don't house all six.
We very rarely do. We haven't housed any of them. So it would be nice to, if we have room behind the police station, or, and it's just under consideration. Like I said, I gave you my views. I'm not trying to steer the bus. I'm just trying to give you some views. You can do whatever you want with this. It's not a, it would need some sort of study. I don't know. This is just a...
My question is, who would staff this?
We'd be using the animal control officer.
It would only be, but it would be open 24 hours a day.
The animals would be caged.
Because who staffs it now?
Nobody.
Nobody, really, but I just want to...
So the animals have to be walked.
Will be contracted.
The one we do cage them, they have to be walked, they're walked by our animal control officer.
See, my question is, this is just for one-time capital expenses.
It would be.
So I don't want something added to this budget.
No, no, this is just the building. This is just to build a structure, a structure.
So there would be no added additional...
No, no additional staff, no additional. There would be additional costs for running electricity and heat line power. So when they're at West Place now, our animal control officer walks them? Yep.
Yeah, I know that, but I just...
And it's, it was the same wherever we were, so it's, it's a common practice.
But if you think about it, we're paying 30-some thousand every year when we can take that right out of the budget.
And we'll get you, we'll get you, another metric we'll get you is, how many, how many animals are we actually containing on an annual basis? And what is, if you did the math, what the true cost would be? Now, could this building also be, you know, there are other issues with the police department that, as some of us have done some tour of, you know, could we move part of the mechanic spot out and make that available? There are some ADA issues in that building that we really need to look at rectifying. It's another whole capital project that's not even anywhere on this project.
Yeah, I know. Okay, so the quint door opening is $15,000.
So that's a rough estimate. I think it'll be less than that. It does fit in the building.
It does.
But the door needs 18 inches.
Yeah. The forestry vehicle, explain that to me.
So we're in the, right now, these major solar arrays that have been put up. Technically, we have roads around them. They've been inspected. It'd be very, very difficult for us to get out one of our pumpers in and actually navigate around those roads. It would be ideal, no different than, another area that really came to play in is that major fire that we had, the 65 acres. And we relied on a ton of other communities to do something with the amount of forestry we have. We really should have something else.
Well, we do have a lot of open space, too, so if something was...
So I would use this in conjunction with the monies that the people who put in Wingover originally put in their plans to put a cistern in there. And it doesn't make a lot of sense to put a cistern in there when there's a million gallons of water sitting right outside the street with a stand pipe already in it, that they're willing to give us some monies to help go towards a forestry truck.
Perfect.
So that would be a match with this to help get us to where we would need to be.
That's an action item in the comp plan.
Yep. So ambulance is obviously one of our, it is in our capital plan.
But that's not part...
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm going down the wrong call.
That's going to be other monies.
It would be other monies. That's actually CARES monies, but...
Which is terrific.
Uh, radio call boxes are, it's a system that, again, I've met with the chief, the vendor. When we moved all that equipment from Crandall Road over to the police station some years ago, I'm going to say it was pretty much antiquated then. It still is. The main brains to it now are very similar to the tax collection office. It's unsupportable. And eventually, we don't want to have a call that doesn't get to the fire station. That system needs to be replaced. That's a two-part system. You need to have a redundancy somewhere else for it as well. And then, we did, we did say that we would give the library monies.
Yeah, we promised this during the budget time that the library, the budget committee cut this, and we told them that we would find the money for this, so.
And the last piece is, we, I know that we're sitting on a piece of equipment over DPW that has a blown motor. It was an international motor. We've been litigating it. We're not going to get anywhere with it, but it is a very viable piece of equipment that we could get back on the road and have a very viable sander, plow truck, if we put a new motor in. So that's the gist of how I would expand the balance of the 3.1 million. I'll give it to schools, too, and...
So that would be giving this school capital 2 million?
Yep.
And we take 1.1?
Correct.
Okay. Any questions from the council right now?
Well, I got two. Fire, police, overtime.
So that's in a different, that's in a different, that's in CARES money. That's, that's how those, that's how those funds were actually justified.
Oh, I'm not reading across.
Yeah, that's the CARES money.
As long as it isn't...
No. This is just for one-time capital, so that we don't tax the people for this. And it will, it will help taxes.
So this is just this year, and then we go forward and develop a plan for...
Right, for the following money.
For the following.
Which, we don't know what that'll be, but that could go into the general fund, some for school and capital, some for, there's a lot of ideas out there, but the survey is helping us with that also.
It is.
And I want to thank Mike and Chris and everyone that helped with that. All right. Any other questions? Right this second. All right. So now I'm going to work out of this memo. And Jerry, who's going to present this? Okay.
Send Mike, send Mike to the public.
What?
Yes, come up to Mike, please.
Oh, yeah, please, please. Now, I want to tell you that we did meet, and we did this to try to make this run smoother. The town council was aware of it. The school committee was aware of it, just so we could kind of bring ideas to the table and help each other with what was needed. So these items were discussed somewhere, and we'll discuss it after. But, all right, the bathrooms.
So maybe I can give a little bit of background. So a lot of, you know, this is the, I don't know, fourth, fifth, sixth, something like that, iteration of trying to work through capital needs over the last couple of years, really. And so some of this has been voted officially by the school committee, but this particular list and this iteration has not been. When and if there's an appropriation made by you guys, then we would vote to accept it as we, as, you know, sort of would be typically by policy.
Well, I was just made aware of that recently, so whenever, if we decide to give this money, we'll have to put in a motion as long as the school committee approves of what we're doing. And then if the school committee feels there's more important things and come back to us, then we'll, we'll set it out, of course.
Right, right. So, so just to go down the list real quickly, refurbished bathrooms at TMS and THS, four at each school. So right now, just to give you some context, at the end of the renovation project where we did the HVAC and the draft walls and all the other stuff at the schools over the bond a couple, few years ago, actually, it was 2016 was the bond, we were able to then do a set of bathrooms at the, you know, when I say set, I mean a men's room and a women's room at the, at the high school and at the middle school. There are four other sets of bathrooms in each, at each school, so a total of eight sets or 16 bathrooms. If we were to do four, we're estimating at about $850,000.
Four at each school? Well, a female and a male, yeah, yeah.
So two sets, two sets at each school. I know, it's only...
But, but you, but there's a total of eight that needs to be done.
There's a total of eight.
So if we decided to do all eight...
Eight pairs.
Eight pairs, or 16 bathrooms. I know.
So this would only do half, any other few?
Yeah.
This would do half.
This would do half of what's outstanding. And I'll just sort of, you know, I walked those bathrooms a couple of weeks ago, and they're pretty horrific, the ones that have not been done. We were able to do the two pairs at the end of the last renovation project. It's always important to remember, well, I'd say there's two pretty relevant things there. One is that both the principals expressed that actually the students migrate towards the sort of refurbished bathrooms, as I guess anyone would.
Of course. You're not dumb.
So it does show some of the importance of that. And the second is that these are also the shelters for the town in an emergency. So, you know, maintaining them is pretty important. And, you know, it's a big-ticket item. That's, I guess, why I spent a little bit of time. Replacing the cider at Ranger, that's been...
But this has been something that you guys have brought to the budget committee every single year.
Correct.
All right.
Yep.
Okay, go ahead.
Replacing the cider at Ranger, in the greater scheme of things, a relatively low-cost item, really, again, asset protection. The schools are the, you know, most valuable asset that the town actually owns. A 1966 dishwasher, which we could probably sell as an antique, but it's certainly a health and safety issue. And then a steamer, also approaching antique, vintage, for about $100,000 between the two of them.
No, I just want to interrupt for a minute.
Yep.
So some of this is, we, we will get a 30% reimbursement?
Yeah. So, so the reimbursement from the state varies between 25% to 40%. 25, and someone should correct me if I'm wrong here, but 25% is the baseline. And then if it is a health and safety issue, and I think we could make a good argument...
Oh, yeah.
That at least the bathrooms and the dishwasher and the steamer are health and safety issues.
So we'd get a percentage back?
So we would, so we would get it, we would definitely get a percentage. I don't know how big the percentage would be.
That's fine. I just want to make everyone aware that we'll spend this money, but we are going to get funds back from it.
Right.
At least 25.
At least 25. And I would, I would guess probably 40 for the bathrooms.
Okay.
But...
And again, when we should we get money back? Those monies should go back into these accounts for capital purposes.
Well, that's what I'm thinking, because if we get a 40% back from the bathrooms, that will help finish some of the other bathrooms.
So that certainly makes fiscal sense. I guess the, the...
But we'd have to...
The issue there is, what's the turnaround time for the reimbursement? Do you take money out of the general fund now to complete the project?
No, no, I would fund it. Whatever comes back later goes back.
Yeah, just fund it whenever it comes back.
Yeah.
And then, the lawyer's not here today, but I think we'd have to make like a restricted fund for that.
Right.
Yeah, we would.
Because it goes into general account.
Right. But we do have a restricted capital fund already, and I'm wondering, could we put it in?
So basically, continue to finance the bathrooms as money is coming back?
It would just be additional monies that become available, as the Opera monies go away and other things. It's, any kind of reimbursement.
Or capital in general, or you're talking about a specific project?
I would say that, you know, especially if this comes from your school system, we should be putting it right back in your school system. I mean, it's...
But we'd have to figure out a way to do that, but...
Right, okay.
We talked about that. I would be on board for that, because whatever reimbursement we get from the, from the school's capital should go back to the schools.
Yep.
I've always felt that way. So instead of going to the general fund, but we'd have to try to, as everyone knows, this is complicated. So we'd have to try to do it restricted.
It is complicated, right.
Well, we did something similar for the police cars when we got that rebate back.
Right.
From the grant.
Yeah. Okay. To date, as far as I understand it, though, I'm, you know, that makes sense because the town is servicing the bonds. Money that's come, come back from RIDE has gone into the general fund.
Different, different, it's, I should clarify that. There are bond reimbursements that are not, they're reimbursements, but they're not really the additional capital outlays that we've been doing periodically.
Correct.
So those are the ones. It wouldn't be the debt service type.
I'm just wondering, because we have a town restricted capital fund.
Mm-hmm.
I wonder if there's some way we could work out to have a school, a school restricted capital fund where the reimbursements from the capital staff...
Right.
Goes right into that fund for you guys. And then we spend that on your capital, because you got the reimbursement.
Don't we have a restricted casino account right now? And could we use that?
Technically, we have it, but the money's supposed to come out and be expended. So it comes in general fund, moves to the gaming fund. It's waiting for a decision from the council now, but you don't really want to be building up an account.
Yeah. Well, I'm just thinking that we, we need to specifically know what we get from your, we need to separate it.
So we can work with the partner revenue, hopefully, as to figure it out.
I think the point that may, you know, that I think we're making is, and it makes sense that if we get reimbursement for capital expended to maintain the schools, if that money, that, that money would be well-spent to then be reinvested in additional capital needs, particularly if there are additional capital needs that, for the schools, that there are additional capital needs that can get additional reimbursement.
I think it becomes a...
Eventually, it goes to zero.
Things kind of get glossed when we keep saying this, and it's, and it's true. You have so much in capital needs that people kind of get it glossed over. They, because it's not being done, they forget about it. They don't want to know about it, and it's, they don't want to fund it. So there's really no other mechanism other than to dedicate a funding source to it.
I agree.
So it would be helpful to take those capital expenditures and reimburse it back into the system.
Because in the long run, it decreases taxes.
Yes.
It's an indirect tax.
Yes. It's, it's tax relief, because it's not in the budget every year.
Correct. Right. And it's avoiding additional costs down the road by trying to take care of things that need to be taken care of.
Yeah, because we glue everything together, and we don't do major repairs. And then what happens is, then it becomes a disaster.
Yeah, well, there's a lot of glue in those bathrooms.
Yeah, I know.
So that's, that's a good point. And I'd like, you know, for the public to understand that the bathrooms that you did do, it wasn't just like replace a sink or a toilet. You gutted the place. It was right down...
Down to the studs.
Right down, and that's what would happen with these other 16 bathrooms that need to be done. They truly, they're...
They're beautiful. I've seen the ones that were redone. They're very nice.
So I don't want people to think somehow we're just putting Band-Aids on things that...
No. This is, this is, hopefully, none of us is going to be around for the next renovation. That's, you know, it would, it would be that comprehensive.
Yes. I was wondering what you were saying.
It wasn't...
Yeah, he wants to die. I don't know. I didn't really like that joke.
That wasn't a threat.
All right, the next one.
Might be a promise to myself.
But also, just to say, and if we pool these, all these projects together, we can have a lot of cost savings, too, because you've got the contractor coming in, doing multiple bathrooms, not just one or two at a time. So that's really another cost savings.
Yes, we talked about that at the meeting. I would like to do more bathrooms, but we'll talk about it later.
Okay. So let me kind of get through the rest of this, and then if you guys are okay with it, I'd like to allow any of the other members of the school committee who are present who want to chime in, too, to chime in. Next is a maintenance contract for the HVA systems at the schools. The, again, a relatively small...
Is that a yearly contract?
It'd be, it's a yearly contract. And I think there's a, you know, we've tried to fund this through our budget every year, and it's kind of fallen to the side. And that's, I think, a discussion that's certainly worth helping.
So help me understand why that's not considered an operational expense?
Uh, it is an operational expense, yes.
Do you put it in your operational budget, though?
We've been trying to get it into our operation.
We can only hope for unity. All right, go ahead. This is a big one, and this, I have to, this is really a good thing.
Yes. So, so in 2008, the stadium was open, so the light poles there are 13 years old. I have it on some authority, probably good authority, that...
You've been there, yeah.
Perhaps the, the contractor that put them up was not the best contractor to begin with.
I was going to be president that day, so I can agree with you.
So, uh, a year and a half ago, one of the poles came down in the wind. And then, uh, that prompted an, an engineering assessment, and, and so two of the poles are up, and one then had to come down because it was structurally unsafe. So what we have learned in the time since then is, one, the company that, that the original work is gone through several owners and I guess the several bankruptcies, and we had Jeff Soa do some pro bono work trying to recoup some money from them, and that was unsuccessful. We did get about sixty thousand dollars or can get about sixty thousand dollars from the insurance company. A proposal by National Grid would replace all four lights with new, more efficient lighting and, um, uh, also offered to, uh, give some financing, I think over seven years, for three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So less than sixty thousand dollars that we get for, um, from the insurance comes at two ninety. The, uh, important, you know, I, I, I think I would make a pretty strong pitch for this on a couple of counts. One is we can't hold any night games without the lights, but I think as significant is the fact that that track, that space is used by all of the town. It's not just, uh, the students of the schools or, or, or for football games. And so I think that has a really significant impact on the quality of life of the community, and so.
So what, give me the full two ninety and then whatever, you have to pay yearly, Denise will keep.
Right.
And pay it.
Right. For you to rent a year.
Yeah, okay. Um, I do want to say that our administrator did, did look into this, and I want to give him a little credit for this.
Yeah.
He, and you guys worked very well with Chris and his suggestions, but, um, Chris had looked around and most of the fields are being done by National Grid.
Right.
So it really did work out very, very well.
Yeah.
Because the price of that one pole was how much, like one forty?
One thirty-six.
So think about it now, we're getting all four replaced.
They're getting LED lights, which is a lot brighter than what they had to start with. So it's a much safer environment than what they had.
So this is an example of the school.
Probably electricity savings too.
Superintendent and the business manager working well with Chris and, um, getting us, getting his suggestions and making this work. So, um, I'm, I'm glad this happened.
Yeah, me too.
Okay.
Next few things, replace three rider lawnmowers that are twenty-five years old to maintain the grounds. Um, repair post paint, add windscreen for the tennis courts, again, relatively smaller items, given the amount of money we're talking about overall. The intercom system certainly should be eligible for reimbursement because it's a health and safe, or a safety issue. And then the last two items were things that we had added after some of our discussions, and again, something that we need to continue to talk about as a committee. But one is turn the THS library into a media center, and that is an important aspect of, uh, basically updating our capacity for, um, digital twenty-first century, uh, education. So as we're all sort of painfully aware, we had to move from in-person learning to, uh, distance learning for the entirety of the nineteen twenty, uh, nine, two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty school year from, you know, March thirteenth to the end of the school year. Last year, we opened partially in hybrid. We are still required to do, uh, not required. We still have to do distance learning for some students because of quarantine, because they've been, uh, identified as a close contact, so on and so forth. So this is really trying to, uh, continue to improve the education of the students. And that is, I would say, if we have been on anything, any, if there's been any mission that we have all been unified on as a school committee, that I think we really need to, uh, also acknowledge the work of Dr. Sanchiyoni on is that we are, we are making progress and improving the quality of the education that we're offering our students. And this is just one more important component of that.
So I'm going to be honest with you.
Yeah.
I'd rather use this money and fix the bathrooms. That's my opinion right now. I don't know if this is like a real priority, uh, but the school committee's going to have to weigh in on this. But I just feel that if we're talking safety for the kids, comfort for the kids, I think those bathrooms are gross, to be perfectly honest with you. And if we can somehow, because I think it's plus about a hundred and six thousand a bathroom.
About.
About that. So I figure with this money, you could at least do five more bathrooms. So, and those bathrooms have come up at the budget committee for as long as I've existed, that they need to be fixed. And I'll be honest with you, some of the bathrooms in the high school, I graduated in nineteen seventy-seven, I don't think they've been touched. They're the same bathrooms when I go in there. And I know that's sad, but it's true. And Deb can attest to it because we've talked about it.
But I won't.
Those bathrooms were there when we graduated from high school, guys, and that was many years ago.
They're, they're a lot thicker with paint now. But they're the same.
Yeah.
That's what's holding it together.
There's like a heart that says Denise Hearts.
My name is probably still on the wall somewhere.
Let's not talk about that. Jerry, help, help me understand what's the potential impact on future budgets from an operational perspective would be if we did the media center?
Would there be any labor costs?
Labor, you know, extra supplies, different types of supplies, obviously, digital.
So, yeah, uh, that, that's probably an unanswerable question in the long run. And the reason for that is that technology and devices change so fast.
That's what I'm worried about.
That I'm not, but, and that's been, that's been, again, a discussion we've had as a committee, is that we should be trying to budget, uh, every year, actually. And, you know, you, you could easily ask the question, well, I seem to remember that you've been spending a lot of money on technology, uh, every year for the last five years. And then, and we have, that's true. And, uh, that doesn't mean that we don't need to spend more.
No, I understand that, but this is a new thing.
Yes, yes.
New capital item.
So.
That was not in the budget right now.
Yeah, okay, so the answer is I can't tell you that it wouldn't, uh, you know, be, and that, and it has to do with the fact that we will continue to have, as I'm sure you guys do, every year, there's going to be technology costs.
Oh.
You know, not, not like, you know.
No, I'm just worried, it's almost like a new program. It's like a new thing when we have so much to take care of in the schools.
The media center or the?
The media center.
Yeah.
In a way, when we have bathrooms falling apart. So, and there's probably other things that I, I don't even know about that we probably, because I don't have to know about it, you guys do. But, um, they need to be maintained.
Do you have a breakdown as to what the five forty-four represents?
Yeah.
Uh, you know.
That's a lot of money.
So let me actually just finish the last item, and then maybe I'll turn the floor over, the mic over to, uh, other members of the committee or, or, and, and or Dr. Sanchiyoni to sort of get his spin on things as well, because I'm just one member of the committee. The last is construction aquaponics lab, working greenhouse, and that's really a hands-on, uh, science, um, laboratory, for want of a better term, that, uh, allows for, uh, better instruction in a lot of different things related to, uh, science. So.
This is a new program.
That would also be new.
Costs money every year.
Right, and that probably also would represent some.
Teachers and staff.
Yep.
And that's not, I don't think what our goal was for this. I think our goal was to take care of things that we've been putting off for a very long time. Uh, maintenance things that we've been, not to start new programs or new things. That's just my opinion. Because I think there's really a lot of maintenance stuff you guys need.
Right.
And I'm not really sure that this money, I know this isn't what I had in mind, to start a new program with.
We also have the state has directed you to provide new instruction for graduation.
Yes.
Which I'm sure is unplanned.
Uh, yeah, I can't think of a mandate. I can't think of anything the state's ever said that tied money to it.
Wouldn't this a hundred and twenty-six thousand, five hundred dollars be better suited to support that mandate than create a new program that isn't a mandate?
Yeah, I, again, we're bringing this to you, it hasn't.
Oh, we're, we're not attacking these areas in any way.
Yeah.
We're trying to make sure that we get the best bang for our buck right now.
Yep.
And we always, we know that capital expenses were never a priority for a very, very long time.
Right.
Maintenance, and we've been criticized for it a hundred times. So I think we need to fix what we have now before starting new things.
Yeah.
Like, of course, we're, we're doing the recycle center, but we have to do that because we're closing the landfill.
Right.
So, uh, um, but in no way are we.
Yep.
Saying that it's the wrong thing, we're just talking it out.
Yep, I hear you.
Where, where was that planned for, the high school?
Yeah. I would like to learn a little bit more why it's costing for. Five, four, five, for, 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 um, the media center, but, um, what we said before.
Yeah, I don't know if it'd be.
And I'm not even sure the school committee has approved this, so.
The school committee has not officially, we have discussed it at a meeting. So I don't know if you, maybe Dr. Sanchiyoni could come up and tell, tell us his vision for those last two items, and specifically, I think that the rest are relatively.
And keep in mind, town council, you can approve everything above that and then send this back to the school committee saying, this is what we've approved, and these two items we're not very comfortable with, we think you should spend it on more improvements and see what the school committee comes back with, but.
Can I ask one other thing?
Sure.
Uh, Jerry, two, maybe three years ago, the intercom system in the high school was talked about. I thought you guys upgraded that.
You want that one?
Sure.
Deb is saying yes.
So if you did, and you need to do more, why didn't you do it then?
Because the, because the wires are from nineteen sixty-six still.
Yeah, so now we're doing the entire system. What we upgraded before was just the phones in the room, and now it's based upon the revenue that we had at the time, but the entire system is failing. So it's nineteen sixty-six, you got wires in the roof that just don't work anymore, and that, as you can imagine, is a huge safety factor. The whole system has to be taken out and redone.
Done, that's one with the roof.
So basically, we taped and glued something together, spent that money, and now it all has, and this is what we're trying to avoid.
Yeah, yeah, and just, and I, I appreciate what you're saying. I, you're absolutely right, but there were so many things that came up during every, you know, every time. And, you know, just as an example, the thing we, we were able to do that were never anticipated in the original renovation were building draft walls that were never even installed when the building was built. So, uh, which then kind of makes you, Abe was the chief, uh, so he could have shut us down at any time in the last fifty years, the, the fire chief, for not having.
He didn't even know that, but now that he knows.
He's writing it down.
He knows.
Now that it's fixed, I'm going public with it. Yeah, so, you know, again, now that we have the draft walls, we're good.
Now you're admitting it after you fixed it.
The ceiling, tiles, and the lighting, you know, were part of it too. So anyway, we did, we did what we could when we had the money.
Welcome.
Thank you.
So you want to explain, let's go over the THS library.
So it, it sort of fits into the same conversation we have. So the THS library is the same library you attended in nineteen.
Seventy-seven.
Forget seventy-seven, and it's been there since sixty-six, right? And things have changed. We have seventy percent of our students going to four-year college, and that library center does not suit their needs. I mean, we, we'd like to bring it down to the studs and recreate small group instruction areas with high technology that they can link their laptops to and, and have communications and work with people in other parts of the world, other parts of the country. We need to make it a vibrant place where they can go and want to be there, and we can show you thousands of pictures of high schools across the country that are set up that way, and it's a difference maker. So, you know, that's my role as superintendent, right, by the best possible education for the kids that come to our school system. So when we look at capital and as we take care of our most critical needs, you know, I always figure our critical needs too is to provide an outstanding education. So first-class media center would certainly serve a large group of our students who, you know, go on to college and, you know, work in the center that could, um, teach them some of those skills that they would use later on.
And it really costs that much money?
That's what our architect came in and assessed it at, and, and certainly we can get to those drawings and show you exactly what would happen in that room.
So this is more than just buying technology.
Oh, oh, yes.
Basically gutting and redoing.
Got it, yeah, all new, exactly. The floor, the insides, the stacks, the, the technology that would come inside with it, some, some additional walls, partitions, windows.
Would you anticipate any additional staff after it's done?
No, uh, we don't because we have a librarian there now, and we see.
Very good one, too.
A very good one, yes, she's outstanding as a matter of fact. Uh, but we see it as a place where teachers would bring their class and then use the resources in there. So our social studies science, so they would come to those places, use it as a resource for kids to learn.
And the ongoing material costs would be offset by what you're already spending?
Exactly, and probably even a little less because, you know, most things getting digitized now.
Okay.
And we can do it for less.
We can, we can look at that, I mean, absolutely.
Okay, let's talk about aquaponics.
So, uh, I don't see that as a new program. So you may recall from our budget last year, we cut our culinary program. So the first time in many, many years, Tivon High School no longer offers culinary. What aquaponics, hydroponics does, and I only use one term there, working greenhouse, it combines the science and technology of growing food, sort of farm to table or growing it to table. So we see bringing the culinary program back, but having these kids actually grow the food. Aquaponics is using fish and the, I don't want to get into the details, but the way some fish to sort of new, uh, provide the nutrients for the plants to grow. Aquaponics uses water that's infused with nutrients. Again, you grow the plants, it's one of the fastest-growing occupations in the world right now, really gives our kids an insight into all the terms they lose in their science classes about plants and so forth. Same thing with a working greenhouse, you're growing the food. So we see bringing back the culinary program, but really with a high-tech science approach to it.
Would there be any additional staff?
We'd hopefully bring back the culinary, I don't know if I'd call it a culinary teacher anymore, but a high, you know, a person.
So that would be a yearly expense that you would add to your budget?
Yeah, well, we're hoping to bring back a lot of staff, you know.
I, I know, but I know that you cut other teaching positions. I'm just wondering if you bring those back instead of adding a new one?
I guess I don't.
I mean, this is just, it's nothing to do with me.
Again, I don't see this as a new one, and we cut five culinary classes, so we have five less electors. And this is just, it's really culinary with a high-end technology component to it. I mean, instead of just buying food and cooking the food, now we're going to grow the food and cook the food, and so it's the full gamut that our students have the experience with.
Any questions from the council?
We've got one. In the past, you, you cut the culinary program last year. Previous to that, how many, you may not know, how many kids were enrolled and how many went on to become or go to college for culinary? Because I see this as something that you would want to have because you had a demand. Without a demand, I don't get it. I could teach kids to grow gar, you know, parents can teach their kids how to grow a garden at home. They don't need to go to school.
Yeah, it's not, but first of all, the culinary classes had good enrollment, so we had probably eighty students per year that were in all those classes, so we had culinary one, two, and three. So there is a demand there.
Some of them went to Johnson Miles, I know that profile.
I don't know the percentage who went on to college, but I suspect some were intrigued by this or at least left with the skills that could support them in other endeavors in their lives. You know, this is a, a program that kids are going to be looking at the science of growing food and being able to take that knowledge with them and hopefully go on to a four-year college and be able to apply it to maybe a level of learning or something, a, a full-time vocational pursuit. You know, these, these type of programs get kids hooked on learning. So you, you, you're not reading about photosynthesis or watching a video on photosynthesis, you're watching photosynthesis, you're making photosynthesis happen. You're growing food, you're growing tomatoes, you're growing cucumbers, you're growing all these things by, you know, nutrient-infused water. And then you're going to take that then and apply it to a culinary skill. So, um, I think it's just something our kids would benefit greatly from, and, you know, we've seen this in many other high schools, and so it's, it's not just something we pulled out of the air and said, oh, this is a good idea. It's been around, we've visited these places, we've talked to these administrators and to the students who are in these classes, and the engagement and the response back is something that's amazing. It's almost something we like to offer Tivon's students.
Without taking a position one way or the other on the aquaponics, um, I think it's a bit short-sighted if we look at, um, experiential learning activities as not important if a person is not going on to college for that activity. They teach valuable skills, you mentioned it, it puts in your hands the science of things. It puts in your hands, you know, writing a recipe is a way to teach a student how to really think clearly and think through a process. That is, uh, something that they can use in, in many careers. So I think sometimes when we think of education as, oh, I'm going to be in this cookie cutter approach, and I shouldn't be able to take these other things. and I shouldn't be able to take these other things over here," that's the danger of really minimizing the role of education in our lives. I mean, I wanted to be a forest ranger in high school. I never was a forest ranger. I got a recreation degree.
You were a cop.
I never really worked in recreation. I got my MSW. That's what I do, but it took me a long time to get there.
Yeah.
Oh, God, I didn't know you wanted to be a forest ranger.
And just to sort of build a little bit on that as well, you know, part of, you know, the brutal truth, I suppose, is that part of the reason the culinary arts program was cut was not because there was no demand for it. It was that that teacher was retiring, and we had to cut positions. And that's what it came down to.
All right.
And I was just going to piggyback on what Mike said. Just because you take this class doesn't mean that's what you're going to do in school. I mean, you could be going to trade school, but I think that we owe it to our students to give them a full education. And there's kids coming out of school can't write a check. Obviously, they electronically transfer funds, but they can't cook. They can't, they can't grocery shop and manage a budget. So, I think that adding these different programs is great, and whether you're going to be a plumber, or a scientist, or, these are still valuable programs. You know, I don't know that right now the funding, but is there for that. I think, in all honesty, I sat on the budget committee for six years and listened to the bathroom stories, and we have a lot of public people coming into our schools, and they see those bathrooms. And I, as a parent with children, playing sports and looking at those bathrooms, and it was embarrassing, having visitors come in, you know, looking at the theater, looking at the bathrooms, looking at the gym. And there's been a lot of nice things that have happened, but we've kicked that can down the road for so long, and there's just so many holes that we need to fill. And, you know, just looking at this, that's the dishwasher that washed our dishes.
Oh, I know, Deb.
When we were buying our pizza squares. You know, and I know I, and that's, that was Friday, pizza squares. And we visited the school with the budget committee.
We graduated together.
And, and the kitchen was, like, it was a disaster. Yeah, it really was.
But it truly is what we had.
It was.
Yeah.
I could visualize the women working there.
I think, I think I do have, didn't you give us pitches at the other meeting? Yeah, I have those somewhere.
I had it in seventy-five. We didn't leave it that bad. You must have really destroyed it.
Yeah, this class of seventy-seven ruined it, yep.
So, Denise, I was just wondering if we could give an opportunity for any other members of the school committee to speak if they would like to.
Just one, just one second, though.
Yep.
I just want to know if, Deb, stay. Definitely stay. Anyone from the council have any questions right now, or any comments? Go ahead.
My comment is really just one of a request as far as process. You guys have given some great feedback, and other than a real quick, maybe eight to nine-minute discussion on Tuesday, we really have not, as a board, had any kind of in-depth discussion. And I think we have a responsibility to, you know, our taxpayers, and to come back to you with something that we've spent a little bit more time doing due diligence on. So, I don't know if, you know, as far as process, if you, if you want to sort of set it aside and let us take your feedback, and let us do our due diligence. Like, I would like to tour the schools. I haven't done that in years, and come back with a revised, you know.
I have to be honest, I'm a little disappointed that that didn't happen, for whatever reason, because this has been, like, we canceled two meetings, one due to me, one due to someone.
The first time we saw this complete list was Tuesday night.
Right, and that's.
So, you know, and the miscommunication was clearly on the school committee's side.
So, Deb, if we decided to approve some of it and send it back to you, or would you just prefer we don't approve any, or?
Well, it's your process, but I get.
It is our process. Like, I was.
I guess I would like to do, I mean, we kind of get a, got a sense now. I would like to do our due diligence, and sort of, we kind of have a sense for the things that you were questioning, which I would have, quite honestly, as well. But, so, it's really, it's your process, but I would like to, I would like to be able to do our due diligence. I think we're tasked with that due diligence, and come back. And I do apologize. I know it was our confusion, but to come back with a list that, we haven't even voted on a list. You know, we haven't even, you know, said, you know, "This is the list we want," you know, "This is a preliminary list." You know, there was.
Yeah, and it is ultimately the town council.
Right, and that's what you said, we, we have.
But you've heard what we're talking about right now. This, I think the intention of this was to spend the money on one-time capital expenses.
Absolutely, yep.
That we've been putting off forever, that the townspeople will not be taxed for. We'll pay for this in cash. It's very frisbee responsible.
And I think that message is very clear.
And of, and of course, like, I have had other discussions. I think for the most part, this list is pretty good. I would like to do more bathrooms, and I'm going to say that 100 times, because I think that's a safety issue, and we do get reimbursed for that, and it's the bang for our buck here. And whatever we get reimbursed for, we can spend on other things for you guys.
We can conditionally approve any of this?
We can conditionally approve some of this, send it to you, and then.
Because I will, I will tell you, just speaking as one member, there are things that aren't on this list that I would like to have a discussion with the board regarding.
I think that's important, because.
It is, and that's what I.
Last thing you want to do is have us kind of dictate to you what you should do.
So, if you prefer that we don't.
Well, let's do it together.
So, if, if you prefer that we don't vote on any of this, you have, we'll probably vote on the town.
Are you guys comfortable with just sort of setting aside an allocation? No, or how?
So, it would have to come back to us.
We want specific.
Well, it's going to have to anyway.
Yeah, we want specific items.
I mean, if there are things on here that are pretty low-hanging fruit, I'd rather, myself, rather conditionally approve those tonight, and then come back. And still, you guys would have to say, "Well, no, we really didn't want the steamer."
That's, that's fine. If that's your process, that, I'm comfortable with that, Mike.
But that's me. That's me.
So, the only other caveat that we did when we were having our discussion between Jerry, Dr. Sanquioni, and councilman myself, was that no matter what we do, everything is going to be required to go out to bid. So, you know, it's definitely, and I think, you know, at some point, whatever, you know, there'll be limits up to certain amounts. If it's under that, then the money's just.
Yeah, that's a great point. Yeah, but if, no, if that's, if that's, if you guys are comfortable with Mr. Burke's suggestion of just conditionally.
The only thing that I will ask is that we get, like, it back to us within, like, at least a month, like.
Oh, for sure.
First meeting in November?
I, yeah, we already had a discussion. I called Dr. Sanquioni this morning, and I do, and again, I apologize, the confusion was on our side.
We all have.
But we will move quickly and diligently to make sure that we, we do our due diligence and get you something. And it's been helpful that we got your feedback, so.
Quite frankly, the same thing's going to happen on our side as well, because while I put something together, I haven't discussed with any of the council members. I'm sure they have their, they've been around far longer than I have.
Well, we.
They know of things that I don't even have on here.
Yeah, but we have talked about this during the budget.
Well, some of us individually have, but not as a group. So, and I don't want anybody to be boxed up, say that, you know, we did this in a run.
All right, thank you.
I think if you.
We have a no more than amount for this.
Yeah.
I think if you made a conditional provisional, you know, decision tonight, we will, we'll have it on our meeting Tuesday. So, you know, one, what's today?
Oh, that's how you mean, next Tuesday.
One week from today, we will take it up and probably, I think, have a final answer about what our feelings are about it, and then can come back to you.
Which would put us at our first meeting in November.
Right, so we could, and then either come back to you as a full committee, or, you know.
So, is the global picture of $2 million a good starting point, at least to give them something to work with? I mean, that's.
Yes, I like that number.
Works for me, Chris.
Trying to get you something.
How about 3.1?
No more than that, but right now, $2 million, I think it's good. And so that the town knows, we had a capital reserve account that we did spend this, this budget. So, we met some of our needs already, and that's why, that's why this is being proposed at this point. But, all right, so, Mike.
Do you want a motion? Or do you want to hear from anybody else?
Anybody else? Diane? Nothing to add? Okay. Yeah, Mike, if you'd like to make a motion, then we can discuss.
So, let me start with the school side. The council conditionally approves an amount not to exceed $2 million with, specific to the items above the line for the light pole cost. So, I'm going to read those, but specific to those, pending the final approval of the school board of any and all items coming back to us for that. So, the refurbishing of the bathrooms at 850. And again, this motion would be not to exceed any of those amounts unless they came back to us. Does that make sense from a bidding perspective?
Yeah.
Okay. Refurbish the bathrooms, 850,000. Replace siding at Rangers, $7,500. Replace the dishwasher at the high school, $55,000. Replace the steamer at the high school, $60,000. I'm a little hesitant on the maintenance contract.
I think they'll work that out among themselves.
Yeah, not excluding the maintenance contract. Replacing the light poles at the high school for $290,000. Replacing the three riding lawn mowers for $24,000. Repairing the posts. Repainting that wind screens for the tennis courts for $6,000. Replacing the high school intercom system for $25,000.
So.
That's the motion.
One second.
So, if you take the latter part out, you're talking, there's still 670,500.
So, it's like 1.3 million, give or take. There's another $600,000 that they can review with generally.
And of course, if, and we just discussed that with Deb, if the school committee says, "Wait a minute, I think we want to do two bathrooms," I don't think you'll do that, but anyway, and come back to us with that, this can be changed. This is conditional on.
Yep. And if you come back and convince us on those bottom two items after the school committee has a chance to look at it, that's up to you.
Okay.
So, I have a motion as second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? One, two, three, four, against?
Again, what?
Against.
Against. Against. Joe, are you against?
Yes.
So, four, three. Motion passes.
Before we close our meeting, could I just, would you allow us to talk timing, just quickly? Jerry, since we have an open meeting.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Dr. Sanquioni, because we have an open school committee meeting, would, could we schedule a tour for Saturdays for whichever school, this Saturday for whichever school committee meeting members can make it? Nine? Okay. Or you can send out and ask what time in the morning works, but that way, we know whoever wanted to take that tour, we could get that out of the way, and then we're ready for Tuesday. Okay, thank you.
Oh, it's fine.
Do you want to adjourn your meeting? Oh, no, you're still here.
Yeah, 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 just hang around. We're not kicking you out.
No, no, they're still all here. I wasn't thinking.
Yes, they did.
Yeah, they did. They had to, because they had three.
Oh, let's close it, then.
Guess what, guys? I found the kitchen equipment.
Show all the water on the floor.
Any opposed? Close.
All right, we're closed. Thank you.
Make sure you visit the kitchen.
Jerry, look.
Thank you, thank you.
I found the picture that you gave me. Thank you. Next question.
Thank you.
So, my second motion is that we approve each of the requests for the casino gaming funds presented by the town administrator. So, that's $650,000 for the recycling center, $80,000 for the tax collector's IT system, $45,000 for the clerk's recording system, $100,000 for the police cars, $15,000 for the dog trucks, $75,000 for the animal shelter, $15,000 for the quint door opening, $35,000 for the forestry vehicle, $35,000 for the radio call boxes, $15,000 for the library, and $35,000 for the DPW Motor International.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion remains. I'll give Deb the second. Second, and then council adjutant. Any further discussion?
Yes, question on the $100,000 for the cruisers.
It's not cruisers, it's administrative cars.
Oh, okay.
Admin cars.
Is that to replace all of them that were there, the antiques that are there?
Yeah, the ones we're putting.
So, $100,000 will cover?
No, it's actually more than that. That's the net amount, the, I believe, chief for you?
Chief.
Is he here?
The first time we ask him a question, he's not paying attention.
Don't give it to him.
So, the admin cars, can we do the rundown? I needed a hundred grand.
So, as you know, the, and as the administrator said before, we get USDA funds. So, we're meeting with USDA this week. We get 35%. And I will ask, with, going back to the admin cars, and the administrator's correct, not to sound flippant, but if we wait 18 more months, I will be able to put antique plates on these cars under Rhode Island general law, because they'll be 20 years old.
Will you put them in the parade?
So, and matter of fact, I've heard about selling them. I'm telling you, my mechanic was looking at them this week and last week. They are total junk. These are the cars that are not mainline cars that your patrol officers are responding to emergencies. These are your detectives. These are me, the command staff. So, they're still responding to emergencies. The chassis is going to get there ahead of them, because they're that bad. So, what I would add, and also the animal control officer, again, not to be flippant, my father used that truck, and I don't think I have to say anything more.
Remember, you told me that.
Right.
So, the financing end of it, it's, to do the five cars.
The five, so it would be the five cars and the animal control wagon. So, what I would respectfully ask is that.
No, it's okay.
No.
No, go ahead.
I'm sorry.
It's just Jerry.
It's going to be the target stuff, you know, so.
I don't agree with that.
$150,000. With the $150,000, that would buy five admin cars and the animal control wagon, of which, we would get back $56,000 from USDA. So, which is exactly what we've done before, correct?
So, $100,000 will cover it right now?
$100,000 won't.
No, he needs $150,000 upfront.
Needs $150,000, yes.
You always do this.
So, my question, Chris.
So, I would eliminate the animal control shelter. Yeah, that would do it, if we take out the animal control shelter for 75.
But the police dog truck, is that part of the?
That is included in the 150, yes.
So, we really need another $35,000.
Thirty-five, and I'll get you back 56.
So, we taking the animal shelter out?
Yeah, we'll just take it out completely.
For now.
For now. Then we'll see what we.
So, what's that total of all those dumb numbers?
That would be 1.1.
1.1?
Plus two to the school's 3.1.
No, 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 just for yours, just for ours, 1.1.
No, because you're taking.
Because you're taking the 75.
No, no, no.
What's the math on what's on paper right now?
It's 1.1, so, take out 75, and add 35.
Yeah, but, I'm sorry, you usually.
I made cake smell in culinary yards.
Okay.
1.025.
There you go.
So, 1.025.
So, I'm going to offer an amendment to my motion that sets the upper amount for the administrator to use for the projects that we identified at 1.1 million dollars, but removing the animal shelter and adding 50,000 to, no, 35,000 to the police cars admin.
And that gives you 35,000 to play with if something goes over.
So, when, when you're done with the motion, I'll have an explanation.
So, that's, that's the motion. That way, there's wiggle room, and he can come back to us and say, "I got the reimbursement, and now we can look at the animal shelter," or whatever.
Do I have a second?
So, I'll second that.
Do you have that, Joe?
Do you understand it, Deb?
Yes.
Okay.
The animal shelter is gone. We added 35,000 dollars to the cars.
I get it.
And we're going to get 56,000 back.
This is the way we always.
And that'll go back into that fund.
Yeah. Okay, so I have a second to that motion. Any comments or questions from the council?
Can I just ask a question?
Yeah, of course.
Can I ask the treasurer a question? 3.1, how did we get to the 3.1?
The casino money.
How, did we receive a total of $3 million that they had owed us last year?
3.1.
Yeah.
Because we had $900,000.
That's part of the 3.1. They made us whole.
Yeah, but Chris and Mike went to the governor and got. Yeah, but Chris and Mike went to the governor and got...
So they were giving us, they give us drips and draps throughout the, you get so much every month, you get so much every quarter. At the end, we were still going to be short, but the governor made us whole.
So they gave us like 2 point, whatever it is. Okay, so that totaled...
We did for FY '21.
Okay.
We did 3.1 million.
We cut the whole 3.1 minus the 900,000 that they had already...
No, it's part of it.
It's part of it.
So it's just...
Right, they gave us whatever it is, 2.3, whatever, 2.1.
Whatever the net of it.
And then 900,000. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, so motion's been made, and second, all those in favor? One, two, three, four, four against? Two. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have one other motion?
Go ahead.
So...
Is it to adjourn?
No, not yet. So my other motion is... To direct the town administrator to work with the solicitor, the treasurer, and any other necessary parties to find a way for us to take any reimbursements that we receive and put them in a special account or accounts, restricted accounts, for the purpose of using those reimbursements for, could be other grants that we get. Could be reimbursements from the state, you don't have to put all that in.
To go in together.
To go in, to be reused for capital expenses with a separate stream for school committee reimbursements.
So who did you want to?
To imagine everybody to work it out.
So myself, Mike, and the treasurer will work it out.
And whoever else you need.
So is part of that discussion or motion, if this is going to make it a formal motion, Denise brought a very good point with me earlier today, and I think it's something that should be considered. To the extent we go out to bid, and let's say we're looking at these cars and we say it's 150, but it comes in last time at 146, the residual amount of that should stay within these funds. Not for additional spending somewhere else.
Inclusive of any, any funds remaining after, if bids come in lower than expected?
Okay. The treasurer needs direction, that's why I...
But the ordinance sunsets.
It does.
So it has to be spent between now and June. That's the only thing. So that ordinance sunsets, and then when it sunsets, it goes into the regular casinos that we're going to separate different ways. So we have to keep that in mind. Do I have a second to Mike's motion?
I'll second it.
Okay, motion's been made, second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Four, five, against? Two, five, two. Five, two. Oh, my God, Mike, I'm the one that's working 100 hours.
I figured out the 135.
Yeah, you did. All right, entertain a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.